Good evening, welcome to the May 2nd session of the Bellingham City Council. Bellingham City Council meets all requirements of the State of Washington Open Meetings Act. If you would please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the citizens of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, unuttered, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Here.
Dan Hamel.
Here.
Gene Knutson.
Here.
Michael Liliquist.
Here.
Roxanne Murphy.
Here.
Pinky Vargas.
Here.
Terri Bornamond.
Here.
Okay, we're gonna move right into our 15-minute public comment period. And just for anybody who's new, you have three minutes on the clock, and we provide a fair and safe environment, so no clapping and jeering, we want everyone to feel comfortable. Our name, we're gonna start with Michael Ross, then Joseph McDonald, T. Paxton, then Laura Rawls, and Chris Delisle, maybe? Delly, thank you.
Sir.
And Irene Morgan.
This microphone right here.
If you could please just state your name for the record.
Good evening, my name is Michael Ross. I live in the atrium condominium at 1031 North State Street in Bellingham. Last week, I wrote a letter to each of you on the city council complaining that Sanitary Service Company is charging city, county, and state solid waste taxes on select recycling charges, despite the tax codes explicitly excluding recycling activities from being taxed. The problem is that SSC uses identical charge descriptions when these charges are incurred by drivers during recycling pickups, as when they are incurred by drivers during garbage pickups. SSC prefers to ignore this issue rather than creating separate charges for recycling pickups to distinguish them from the existing charges incurred during garbage pickups. Since SSC works under contract to the city, I'm appealing to you in the hope that they will be more responsive to you than they have been to me. Thank you.
Thank you, Michael. Joseph McDonald.
My, my name is Joseph McDonald, and you know I have a speech impediment. The city of Bellingham is at holy work with the false doctrines of Christianity. If this interests you, please, you might want to check out city council meetings every other Monday night. The religious fanatics in this city claim to be Christian, but I think are possessed by the devil. The priests who are probably casting out the TV right now drive people away from Christ. They get off on making everyone angry, and I've seen them be mean to nice people. I suspect that they are not perfect, and Jesus Christ himself would say to them, He without sin cast the first stone. They are very rude, obnoxious, parasitical, judgmental, and general, not very nice people. Their actions certainly don't parallel the words of the song. They will know that we are Christians by our love. They give Christianity a bad name. If you came across them, you probably agree with me. With the exception of the Bible-blasted priests, which I said before, I don't think are Christian. I think Christians want to be nice people and not point the finger at them and say, and tell them what a rude viper they are. I think when you point the finger at someone, there's three pointing back at you. But I feel exempt from this rule because the hypocrites point the finger at everybody else. This group meets at the co-op at Sunday, at Sunday mornings. Considering the weather, I implore the Christian community to protest them. And I, I will provide a sign if you don't want to be held hostage by their metaphorical crossburn terrorism. I am disgusted with them dragging the cross of Jesus Christ through the mud. They are evil hate mongers that just have, just don't have the love of God in their heart. I'm sorry if I offend you by using the word "priest." I believe Jesus doesn't make priests out of people. Jesus makes people out of priests. If the religious fanatics in this city hear about their church, please remember Matthew 24, verse 4, where Jesus said, "Take ye no man deceive you." Very embarrassing priests are a ugly sight in a nice place. I believe with their hate speech, they will soon have a rude awakening and eat the words they condemn people with. Like the fascist Donald Trump for president, it's an ugly unwanted eyesore in a beautiful community. Thank you, and keep, and keep America clean and beautiful.
Thank you, Joseph. T. Paxton.
Thank you, I'm Tim Paxton, and I'm here to speak tonight about the upcoming important vote on a street vacation that you'll be participating in. And it actually is gonna give you a chance to put your voice in about the New Options High School, which is gonna be sited over, exactly over a 10-inch high-pressure natural gas pipeline. Talking to a friend of mine, John McGarvey, he said this is not unusual for Bellingham to be citing schools on top of gas pipelines, and he gave me the current list, which is a list of seven schools: Northern Heights Elementary, Squalicum High School, Sunnyland, the New Options High School, Bellingham High School, Colson Middle School, and the Exploration School. They're all within what's called the 50 percent mortality range of the closest gas pipeline. If there's an incident at one of these schools within 1,000 feet in either direction on a pipeline, which could be from construction or some kind of earthquake or any kind of damage to the pipe, it's likely that by the time that the children are starting to be evacuated from the school along with the staff, the handicapped people, there's a chance it'll hit a spark, and you've got an instant catastrophe on your hand here. So coming up is the Options High School. They need to vacate a bike path which is between the tennis courts and their current school and along Franklin Street to get their project going. They already have the bids open on May 12th, they're having a hearing examiner hearing on May 18th to decide whether or not the hearing examiner's gonna recommend the street vacation, and then I believe the city council gets a chance to approve that. So I'm encouraging you to take a look at our policy, apparently of the school district, of citing Bellingham schoolchildren on top of high-pressure natural gas pipelines, and take a chance to maybe stop this trend here and say, "No, you can find another two-acre site for your school somewhere else in Bellingham." Thank you.
Thank you, Tim. Laura Rawls.
Hi, my name is Laura Rawls. I'm here just to address the city council and the city to help our, to help stop homeless in our city. We can come together to end homelessness, to provide shelter, affordable housing, beds, sinks, toilets, garbage pickup, to save on our taxes. It's cheaper to provide homeless person with a home than it is for a homeless person to utilize the city, city and the local resources. Everyone deserves a place to call home, and we're all people. Thank you.
Chris?
Hi, my name is Chris Delly, and just, yeah, also speaking on homelessness. I hadn't planned on speaking tonight, but the, yeah, the issue, I think the number one thing is affordable housing. So all the other things about programs and shelters and tent cities and everything else, I think it's already been stated in letters to the editors that affordable housing, that's the solution to homelessness. And it's been going on for the past century, so the wealthiest country on the planet doesn't have any excuse. I think what I read in Noam Chomsky from Understanding Power, this is chapter 10, footnote 28, he pointed out the comparison of the impact of social spending on poverty rates reveals a vast difference between the US and other industrialized nations. The US tax and transfer system creates a 28.5 percent reduction in the poverty rate, whereas the tax and transfer systems in all other industrialized countries decrease poverty rates by between 60 and 80 percent. The only exceptions being Britain, Australia, and Canada, whose tax and transfer programs still reduce poverty rates by approximately 50 percent. So again, that's Noam Chomsky. And inadvertently, he basically takes away half the argument for legalizing marijuana, by the way. You know, that's a kind of a bygone issue, but as far as needing tax revenue from the marijuana, well, if the tax and transfer system isn't working in reducing poverty, then, you know, what are you doing but supporting, but empowering the plutocracy instead of helping the poor people which need to be helped, you know, by tax revenue? And I'm not in favor of tax revenue from marijuana, because I created a severe mental illness for me as a teenager. I attempted suicide when I was 20 years old, directly related to spending, probably about, I was spending about $400 a month on marijuana alone when I was working, you know, low-income jobs, bringing home maybe $700 a month. So it was over half my paycheck. So you can see how that contributes to homelessness when you get addicted to drugs. And yet, instead of providing affordable housing, we're pushing recreational drugs in this country. So, you know, instead of you got a, sort of the religion being the opiate of the masses, now we've got marijuana as the opiate of the masses. Got a bunch of stone people that won't care that we keep having the wool pull over our eyes. You know, we keep being hoodwinked on these issues when we should be demanding affordable housing, number one. That's what we need. Thank you.
Thank you, Chris. Irene Morgan.
Good evening, thank you for allowing me to be here. I'm going to alter what I was gonna say a little bit, because I'm very excited that Laura is doing what she's doing. As most of you know, I've been stamping for the homeless for a long, long time. Western did two classes up at Western a couple of years ago, have a whole plan that they laid out for the city, and I'm really sorry it's not coming in, hasn't yet been implemented. I hope maybe with this, it might sooner than later. Because we all know it, it does save money. And so secondly, I'd like to apologize to all of you and to some of the people, people that aren't here this evening, for being several months tardy in thanking you for being courageous enough to stand up and oppose the jail tax last fall. You educated yourself, and you looked at alternatives that are workable and are being done in many different places, rather than expand the jail industrial complex. And I really commend you for doing your job as the city council and not supporting the jail tax. This morning at the task force meeting, I'm a member of that task force, the Incarceration Prevention and Reduction Task Force, I was really excited because there was lots of people who were excited, and Peter was one of them, who talked about the alternatives that are available, and, and how we can do them, just like many other cities around our state have already implemented some of the, some of the alternatives that actually work and work very well to reduce the population on our jail, and homelessness is just one of those things. There's no legislation needed on many of the things that have already been done in other places, and prosecutorial discretion is the largest part, or at least a very large part, of some of the alternatives that can be done. And again, the sheriff, or whoever, the, I'm sorry, our county executive is bringing forth the same jail tax again to be voted on. We already said no, so I'm hoping that those of you who are still on the fence about whether it's a good idea or not, will, will go to the task force minutes and read them, and there's audio you can listen to. And Bellingham is doing some wonderful things to reduce the population, you can be very proud of yourself, as is Lummi, and they've taken a lot of their people that have been in the jail for years and doing alternatives with them. And the Restorative Community Coalition, which is, I founded nine years ago, is, has a restorative economic program, policy that we would like to share, that would reduce our taxes even further. Thanks so much.
Thank you, Irene. I don't have any more names, but is there anyone who wishes to speak at public comment? You can come down here if you would like an opportunity. Anyone else for public comment? Last call, okay? All right, we're gonna review, we're gonna move to the review this afternoon. We, the city council had our committee meetings. We're gonna review, and our first one was Parks and Recreation, and Michael Liliquist is the chair.
Thank you, Pinky. The Parks Committee met today. It was an information-only briefing and discussion related to forming a metropolitan parks district. A district is an alternative or additional way of paying for parks and trails if approved by the voters. The city is considering many things we can do to reform our finances. The discussion is overall, this afternoon, touched on a couple of matters. For example, the overall tax burden to the public in one way or the other, the appropriateness and the pros and cons of different funding mechanisms, and concern about how to safeguard and institutionalize the Greenways commitments. No decisions were made, we're still discussing whether or not to accept a citizen's suggestion to renew Greenways or pursue an alternative funding mechanism, which may or may not include a parks district. That was information-only, end of committee report.
Thank you, Michael. Lake Wacom. Is it okay in my business? Absolutely.
Since I was feeling a little passionate this afternoon, I thought if, if the council will indulge me, I'd like to restart part of the discussion that we had, which was the level of service discussion. So truly, when Michael was talking about the EMS levy, he could have been discussing our parks funding. It's, it's, it's some of the same things, and you said it much more succinctly and clearly than I said. We are dealing with a general fund deficit. We are not able to fund the essential services of our parks, and the level of service discussion is how do we ensure continuous funding for the things that the city is responsible for funding? And so anyway, I just wanted to say, I hope when we have this discussion again, we can talk about it in the context of level of service, because that's the way it was supposed to be presented. And I may have gotten into too many of the details that were not necessarily pertinent to the discussion we're having right now. The concern I have is if we do the great, just the same thing we're doing now, is we're not affecting our level of service discussion. And so anyway, thank you for indulging me, I appreciate it, and I, I don't mean to get in a debate, Michael, with you, but I'm just, I'm, I just felt like maybe I was not clear. My husband says I have trouble with that sometimes.
Councilmember Liliquist.
So germane to that, the Parks Committee, I think Mr. Seppler said that in June, we will be having a discussion of the level of service, basically, how much parks can we afford? There's two halves of the equation, how much can you afford and how are you gonna pay for it? So there is that other piece that, that wasn't included this afternoon.
Right, thank you.
Lake Wacom Reservoir Natural Resources is chaired by Councilmember Dan Hamel.
Thank you, Pinky. We had three items before us today. The first one was an update on grant funding status from the State of Washington Department of Ecology for Public Works Natural Resources. I just wanted to cover some of the items that were lost as a result of the funding going away, essentially. There were several items, there was the Maplewood Avenue Water Quality retrofit, the Meridian Street water quality retrofits. There was funding for water quality for Public Works operations that will then, that went away, but it will be, it will move forward and be paid by those who use the public ops yard. The other items were Little Squalicum Estuary creation and the enhanced vector truck purchase. That was already purchased, so they're gonna have to find other, other dollars from their programs to fund that. There's a sixth project toward net-zero water use, which was also in the mix there, and that would be to capture rainwater at the, for the public works operations to use nonpotable water for street flushing and things like that. And that was for information-only, and that was presented by Ted Carlson. Our second item was a report from the April 25th, 2016 Lake Wacom Policy Group, and I wanna cover some of the items there. There were three items being discussed during that policy group meeting. The first one was a review of Ecology's published water quality improvement report and implementation strategy. This is related to the Total Maximum Daily Load, or the TMDL. Staff provided an overview of the implementation strategy document that was submitted in 2014 by the Washington State Department of Ecology to the Environmental Protection Agency for review, and which has now been approved. A major focus of the strategy is low dissolved oxygen and phosphorus loading in the watershed. Jurisdictions will submit a schedule that would reach the required total maximum daily load targets in 50 years at a total cost of an estimated $100 million or $2 million per year. Local intent is to accelerate achievement of milestones by using grant receipts to speed up the work. A detailed implementation plan is due to DOE in 2017. Enforcement of the TMDL plan and its milestones will occur through the mechanism of the National Pollution Discharge Elimination System, which is a federal permit for local jurisdictions to release stormwater. Meeting the requirements of the TMDL and associated milestones will be a condition for remaining in compliance with the permit. Permits are five years long, and two cycles will span 10 years each for the TMDL implementation cycle. Second item was results of the homeowner incentive program, or the HIP program. The city commissioned a series of research activities to evaluate and improve the homeowner incentive program. Research included phone and online surveys, focus groups, and qualitative research involving program staff. Some of the highlights of the outcomes were existing resources are not adequate to sustain the program given its current design. There is a need to target participants with properties having the largest phosphorus contribution, and these are properties with large lawns and shorelines, and properties along the shoreline. A revised program will be piloted and fine-tuned before it is implemented more broadly, and this topic will come back to the policy group for additional discussion with a focus on obtaining feedback for future program design. Third item was a discussion around septic issues in the watershed. Representatives and consultants of the Lake Wacom Water and Sewer District presented information on a septic project that they're considering. The district has identified one particular area on the eastern part of the lake along North Shore Road where service could be extended to existing properties. These properties currently have neither water nor sewer service, and many are located directly on the lakeshore, and it is believed that they're drawing water from the lake. To extend septic, the State Growth Management Act allows for two pathways. One is a creation of a limited area of more intensive rural development. This path can be justified if most of an area was developed before 1990. In this instance, 54 out of the 98 properties were developed before that date. Second, there can be a health and safety exemption, especially if systems are failing and there's pollution. Research techniques to identify septic pollution and its sources are improving. One approach tracks optical brighteners used in detergents in the water with follow-up sampling done to further narrow down the sources. The district has issued an RFQ to seek out firms with appropriate expertise for this type of research. The next meeting of the Lake Wacom Policy Group is May 23rd at 3:00 PM at the fireplace room at 625 Halleck Street, and the public is encouraged to attend. The last item was approve and authorize the mayor to enter into an interlocal agreement between the city of Bellingham and the Lake Wacom Water and Sewer District to finance the 2016 aquatic invasive species boat inspection program. This moved forward with a mixed recommendation this afternoon, and I so moved.
Second. Sorry.
Discussion? I have a point, but go ahead, Dan.
I brought up this afternoon, and I'll, I'm gonna bring it up again. This, this is a troubling vote for me. We don't have a Plan B when it comes to protecting our lake quality through any type of other inspection program. I'm concerned that there are many entrances into the lake for watercraft that just are not being inspected, and that's, that is factual. According to the policy group, members of that group, there are 100 sources of entry. So I'm just concerned about it, but we don't have a Plan B in place right now. Inspections are happening, so I'm gonna vote to approve this tonight.
I'm, I've been really struggling with the AIS program. I served on the Lake Wacom Policy Group, and water quality is a really high important priority for me, but I'm this close to voting no on the AIS program this year, and I was that close last year. I feel like there are too many points of entry that we don't control. Our fees aren't being covered by even 50 percent of the cost, and we're a standalone. We don't have any support from the state, and we're the only people, we're one of the few people doing this, not the only, one of the few people doing this. And I really struggle, because I know that prevention is incredibly important, and if we don't prevent this, it could cost us millions of dollars. But there's a lot of feedback from constituents about the cost that they don't feel is valued, and I really, really struggle with that. And with our level of service discussions, all of these things put in the mix, it's really hard for me to vote for this. But, like you said, Dan, we don't have a Plan B, and I, I kinda feel like we don't have a choice. But if there is no change, no state funding, no change in the costs, et cetera, next year, then this will be the last time I vote for it. Councilmember Bornamond.
I am voting against it, not because I don't value our relationship with, with our other partners, but because I don't think we should be launching powerboats in, out of Boladell Donovan to begin with, and I especially don't think the many should be paying to subsidize the sports of a few, you know, to be able to run powerboats on our drinking water. So I've got a number of objections to the whole program. And when we're closing some programs because they don't pay for themselves, like Clean and Green, which are used by so many people, because they don't pay for themselves, but yet we are subsidizing programs for just those who wanna bring their powerboats into the lake. I've got a problem with that, so I'm voting no again on this.
Councilmember Barker.
So I had a, I had a good discussion with a constituent after our meeting today, and they brought up a really valid point that I hadn't thought of. Of course, as Dan said earlier, this is a risk management, we're doing the best we can at this point with our other partners needing to maybe do some more, but I hadn't thought of it from this point. But that launch is an accessibility. It's accessibility for people that do not have the funds to live on the lake, or, or that have a friend that will let them put their boat in the water. And, and some people, although they're, they don't have very much money, that's what they do for fun for their family. They invest a little bit in a boat, and then they go out on the lake. And if we're gonna allow other people to have boats on the lake, you know, maybe that's a different discussion to have with the county and the other people who are involved. But if you don't get to live on the lake, why, why should only those people get that privilege? And I really hadn't looked at it from that point of view. I also, you know, you think of the amount of money it would cost if one of these little creatures got in there, so, so I'll be voting for it, and hopefully, I think we've given some good feedback, maybe staff will be having some Plan B discussions. But right now, Plan B is to close the launch, and, and I think that maybe it's a little too, it's a, it's a social justice-type thing in some ways, and I had never looked at it that way. So thank you to the constituent.
Councilmember Liliquist.
You know, I, I don't vote based on whether or not I think people, you know, should have the right to, you know, enjoy boating on the lake or not. For me, it's purely a matter of water quality and our legal requirement to keep the water clean, our legal requirement to provide and protect our drinking water supply. So to me, it all comes down to what's the best way to protect our drinking water. Taking all the boats off is the best way, but given you only control, that is you, the city, we only control 5 percent of the watershed, and it was a struggle getting our partner to come onboard, our county, who controls the other 95 percent in access. This is as good as we can get. As Dan says, we don't have another better alternative that is politically viable, that involves our partners. Now, right now, this has to do with the Water District, or the Water and Sewer District stepping up, giving $50,000. They're not part of the problem, they're part of the solution, so I'm happy to accept their money to what I think is the second-best solution, because the best solution is out of reach, and another solution isn't in the offing. So I think this way, we inspect boats, we keep out invasive species, we protect the worst-case scenario, hopefully, of no more, no invasive species like the quagga or zebra mussels, which will ruin the lake forever and drive up the expenses for everyone, including every single ratepayer, when we have to start cleaning out those pipes every year. So we're preventing a terrible disaster. This may not be the best way to do it, but it's the only viable way. I've gotta support it.
Councilmember Murphy.
I'm stuck in the same quagmire. Imagine what it's like to view this as a member of the Nuxak Indian Tribe, and this is a part of our original area. This is our original water, and so it's really hard for me to think about the fact that there are boats on that that could be doing the damage and destruction to that body of water that we then pay so much money to sanitize and prepare for our community members. The governance part of it is so difficult for the costs that we have to pay, but I have to go with my head and my heart that we need... have to go with my head and my heart that we need to continue to inspect the boats because I don't think we'll get to a point of courage anytime soon, although I wish we could about keeping boats and such crafts off of our water.
Councilmembers, any other comments, discussions? No? Okay. We have a motion in front of us to approve and authorize the mayor to enter into an interlocal agreement between the City of Bellingham and Lake Waukam Water and Sewer District to finance the 2016 Aquatic Invasive Species Boat Inspection Program. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Nay.
Motion carries six, one.
That's the end of committee report.
Thank you. Our next committee is Finance and Personnel, and Roxanne Murphy is the chair.
Well, this one will hopefully be a little bit easier. So we had one agenda item, and it was a 2016 budget ordinance adjusting the salary grade for two main cashier positions. So there was a job audit that was done, and that determined that the aquatics' main cashiers should get paid just a little bit more. And so this is a $2,755 cost, and that will get absorbed in the existing Aquatics Center budget. And so this reclassification and the budget ordinance adjustment was approved unanimously in our committee, and I so move.
Second.
Any discussion, comments? No? Okay, so a motion in front of us for the 2016 budget ordinance adjusting the salary grade for two main cashier positions. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries seven, zero. Community and Economic Development Committee is chaired by April Barker.
Thank you. We had three items in committee today. The first was a resolution authorizing 2016 Housing and Urban Development Annual Action Plan. We had a presentation by Samya Letz. She's our new housing service program manager. It was her first presentation, and she did a wonderful job. She's a wonderful resource, and I'm really happy with the hire personally. So with that, there was unanimous recommendation with one person abstaining to recommend the passing of the resolution, and also staff recommends the pass as well. I so move.
And second.
I'm new for all of you, so just like.
Terry.
We have a resolution authorizing Housing and Urban Development Annual Action Plan in front of us. Any other discussion, comments? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries seven, zero.
The second item in committee was a resolution amending the 2012 Housing Levy Administration and Financial Plan. Again, there was a unanimous recommendation with one person abstaining to pass the resolution, and staff recommended also to pass the resolution. I so move.
Second.
Any discussion? Councilmember Lilicust.
I'm conflicted about this vote. First, I want to, sorry. I'm conflicted about this vote. First, I want to correct the record. This afternoon, we have a category, the biggest category, which is for creating new affordable housing units or preserving affordable housing units. And I said most of those were preserved, not new, new units. Actually, I was wrong. The numbers are in here. They're not all built yet. They won't be for a year or two, but there's actually more like 60, I think 65% are new, new units, and 35% are preserved units. Even so, I just have a hard time moving away from our original commitment, which is to put three-quarters of the money into producing or preserving affordable housing, permanent solutions to people who are low-income and can't afford housing, and moving more and more to the short-term fixes, as critical as they are. I prefer long-term solutions over short-term solutions. I prefer sticking with what the voters approved as opposed to what they didn't approve. I'm not a stickler. We should adjust to the times. We should adjust to the realities of the situation. I'm being told these are the new realities of the situation. I'm just very conflicted. I'm somewhat relieved by the fact that there's more going into construction than I understood. I'm relieved by hearing that we're actually getting state funding, 1.5 million from state funding for one of the projects, 22 North, which kind of offsets the 1.4 that we're dropping out of it. I'm just going on and on because I'm conflicted in my mind about shifting more and more away from long-term solutions to short-term solutions. This afternoon, I abstained, which is a bit of a dodge because I hadn't made up my mind. I kind of want to vote no, but I'm not sure what I'm going to do.
Stay tuned.
Councilmember Bornham and then Barker.
Now, I am going to support this because one of the things I see with this change is it's going to get more people into housing. And right now, given the problem we have with homelessness in the city, whatever we can do to get people out of those situations, move them from couch surfing into some type of more permanent housing, even if it's transition housing for now, I think this solves, it goes a long ways towards solving a lot of problems, or at least moving towards solution for problems. So I'm going to support it because of, you know, because of that.
Councilmember Barker, then Hamel.
I think, since you said you were undecided, you said it's a short-term solution, and you want the long-term solution, and I totally have to agree with Terry that it's these short-term solutions that might keep somebody from having the need for these longer-term, more classic things like a 22 North, where we also have to pay somebody to live there as well. And so if you can get somebody before they're chronic over and over and over, we may be in a position. So I look at it as, as I said earlier, that, you know, in the beginning of all this, we don't, we don't know, so we make it, we keep it really elevated. And then as we get into it and we learn what we need, we start having to move some funds around and figure it out. And I think maybe when we have that discussion later about, I think we were going to have the discussion about the community block grant funds and what we were looking at and what some of the things are, you know, we can have a discussion about maybe when we give funds to rehab, we make some caveats about it. It needs to, it needs to be in perpetuity, or, you know, we get something a little bit more that could make sure that that stays there forever. So I'm supporting it. I'm so thankful that these groups are stepping up and trying to solve the problem of just not having enough housing. I do want to reiterate that there was an opportunity here to have some market-rate housing, and I think that's important. I think it's important to give people dignity and allow people to be living amongst, you know, everybody and us not separating people into boxes within our city. So with that said, I'll be supporting it wholeheartedly. And again, to all the programs that are stepping up and doing this kind of thing, I'm so happy we have the money to do it. So thank you to the people as well that passed the rest, so.
Councilmember Hamel.
Just want to clarify a couple of points, clarify and then make a point here. The rental assistance and supportive services was always in this levy. This is what the voters voted for. They voted for producing and preserving housing units of, or units of housing, and they also supported the rental assistance and supportive services as well as low-income homebuyer assistance and acquisition of property, strategic acquisitions. So that was absolutely what the voters voted for. And I have to disagree on characterizing supportive services as a short-term fix. I don't think that that's true. I think that the person that needs help in five years to remain in their homes, so they don't recidivate to homelessness, is, that's sustainability. That's just as important as the unit that they live in. If they, if they're not able to be successful in their housing program because they don't have the case management there, because they're not taking their medications, or whatever the case may be, then that's not success. So to me, the supportive service piece is absolutely essential to this, to this program.
I have a quick comment, and then Councilmember Murphy, and then Knutson. I am going to vote for this because we have a homelessness crisis, and we need to find solutions now. And I think part of our job is being adaptive to what our needs are, and that's an important role of us as government body. Councilmember Murphy.
Well, I just wanted to say how lucky I feel to serve on a city council where each one of us individually and collectively supports affordable housing, because I'm coming with the full recognition that it is not like this everywhere else. And so, you know, the question of how we get there is what gets really complicated really quickly, but I also want to point out that we have a community that so overwhelmingly supports affordable housing. That's why I have the utmost faith in this solution right now, because I think the longer-term solutions we will get to in working as a council and working with our community.
Councilmember Knutson.
You know, one of the blessings about being up here is being out in the community and getting to go to events that affect a lot of people. And last Thursday, some of us went to the Blessing of St. Francis place, and we had a lot of people come up to some of us and pat us on the back and say, "Thank you for making this happen." We owned that piece of property. We sold it. The project started going up. There was a lot of upset people about it, but you know what? In the long run, it worked out. But to have those people come up to you with tears in their eyes and say, "Thank you for getting me off the street and getting a second chance," folks, that's what it's all about. And that's what we're trying to do here. It could be any one of us out there, and I say that from somebody who went through some pretty rough times when I first got hurt. I was on Illinois for seven months and going through a divorce, and if it wasn't for my mother taking me in at 38 years old, I could be one of those out there. But I had a parent that was there for me. Two years later, I ran for city council. So folks, it can happen to anybody, and everybody up on this dais believes in that, and I fully understand that the citizens of this community believe that, too. There are success stories everywhere, and we can make that happen if we continue down this road.
Mayor Kelly.
Since I really care about this a lot. So thank you. I appreciate all of your comments, and I just wanted to second what Dan said about supportive housing not being a short-term fix. But what this administration's doing, what I believe supports what the city council wants us to do, is to come up with that continuum of housing so that in any one circumstances, there's some place for someone to go, and hopefully, we end up with permanent housing for them. And I think the goal of self-sufficiency and economic independence for anyone who can reach that goal is what I have. And then we have the safety net for people that we need to continue to support. So I think you all, I know you all understand that, and I think it's a good model for us to use because we're looking at everybody. Thank you.
Any more discussion? No? Let's just check in. Did we have a motion?
Yep.
Just trying to catch up here. And we're a second? All right. So we have a motion in front of us, a resolution amending the Housing Levy Administration and Financial Plan regarding the use and expenditure of housing levy funds authorized by the voters in Proposition Number One. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Attaboy, Michael.
Opposed? And that's a unanimous vote of seven, zero. Thank you.
Oh, third item. Sorry.
And you.
We had a presentation on choosewaukam.com, a really creative portal for businesses choosing to start, grow, or locate in Waukam County. And as I was stating, this is the City of Bellingham partner with Waukam County and the Port of Bellingham to create a webpage to serve as a portal to the numerous services that are offered to businesses that choose to start, grow, or locate a business in Waukam County. The new website communicates that as a region, we welcome businesses, we want existing businesses to be successful and grow, and we welcome new businesses to the area. Staff will present. With that, so you can watch that earlier today. For those of you that are new watching at home or here, because we have a real meeting of the meetings during the afternoon, so some of this seems like it's moving pretty fast. We were here till 5:00 o'clock earlier, so a lot of talking does happen, and you can go back and find that on TV10. I want to thank Tara Simeon for her presentation, but also for helping get all of this together. And of course, Mayor Kelly. For the idea, sorry, for the idea, I think whenever people came to us, it sounded like you were like, "Well, that's maybe, we're going to need some partners," and you went out and you got the partners, and we made it happen. And I was at the presentation, and I thought it was great, and we've gotten some good feedback from some constituents, and we'll be making it even better. So it was for information only. Go to the website, choosewaukam.com. You can check it out and see all the partners there. Thank you, Tara, for all your work on that. End of committee.
Wonderful. All right. So the next is committee of the whole. We had five items in front of us today, and the first one was a presentation by the Northwest Clean Air Agency, and they did a presentation on their new website. And if you want to check it out, the website is NWCleanAirWau.gov. And if any of you have ever been to this website before, you will see that this went from a science website to a user-friendly, fun-with-buttons website. So right now, you can just put in your zip code, and you can get the air quality of Bellingham or anybody who's in the Northwest Clean Air Agency's service territory. The website looks great. We thought it was wonderful, and we even recommended that a link from the new Northwest Clean Air Agency website be put on our Choose Waukam site. So that was wonderful of Katie to come in and give us that presentation. The second item in front of us was preliminary findings regarding the city's commercial zoning code. So graduate students from the University of Washington's Department of Urban Design and Planning conducted a preliminary view of the city's commercial zoning code. They did focus groups that had many different kinds of community members, staff members, city administration, public officials, land use professionals, and business owners. What they came in and brought us, presented to us today, was a review of the findings of the focus groups. So they are going to come back and give us recommendations in June. This was just a review of the findings, and I'm going to summarize the review of saying our zoning is extremely complicated and difficult to use. So they're going to come back with recommendations in regards to maybe a roadmap for us to kind of follow down in if we are to revise our zoning. Does anybody wish anything else to add on that one? Okay. The third item in front of us today was a resolution in support of the proposed Emergency Medical Services Levy. We had a unanimous recommendation for, and the resolution of the City of Bellingham approving a countywide ballot proposition for a levy to fund a countywide emergency medical system for the period from January 1, 2017, through December 31, 2022. And this is a recommendation for the county council to put this on the ballot for 2016. And I so move.
Second.
Councilmembers, any discussion? Councilmember?
I just want to thank Terry and the mayor, especially the mayor, for making the motion and doing the heavy lifting over there and getting this thing through. It's a monumental document after all the years of strife we've had with this, and it's my hope that the county council now steps up to the plate and looks the executive in the eye and makes this motion and does this, period. They need to do it. No committees, no putting it off. They just need to do it for the sake of people in Waukam County.
Councilmember Bornham.
Well, just hopefully, this will leave you, the county council president did vote with us at the oversight meeting to put it on the November election, and I was so pleased that, you know, that he's been so supportive of it, because he's went through the process and worked through it. And so he understands, you know, how much work went into this, how much work it is to get all the different partners and all the different stakeholders together to support something. So he, you know, so he supported it, and so I'm very happy to see that.
And I just wanted to thank Councilmember Bornham and Mayor Kelly, who sat on this board for the year and made this happen. And I know when everybody came to the table, that nobody thought they were going to agree on anything. So I want to say bravo for a process that works, and I do sincerely hope that the county moves forward because it seems everyone else is in agreement, and I hope they support this as well. Mayor Kelly.
And I add thanks to Brian Heinrich from my office, who was on the technical committees, and also Chief Newbolt, who had a very prominent role in making sure that this was done right. He got compliments from, as the chair, he got compliments from the county and others for what a professional job he did. And so I thank Brian for sitting through all those meetings for me, except for the EOB meetings, and then Chief Newbolt, too.
It's been a real team effort.
Yes. So with that, the resolution in front of us for the City of Bellingham approving a countywide ballot proposition for a levy to fund a countywide emergency medical system. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? And that is unanimous. Thank you so much, everyone, for that one. And then the fourth item in front of us was a briefing on the 26th legislative session. So a little bit of background on this. Every year, the city, the county, and the Port of Bellingham, we get together and, well, maybe not personally, but we all put things forth, and we ask for things to be put on our legislative objective for the year. This was a shorter session, a couple months, so it wasn't quite as This was a shorter session, a couple months, so it wasn't quite as long. However, we had some things that were really important to us. Some things were successful and some not so much. So, we didn't get all the funding that we asked for on projects that we were really hoping for. Some of those were reviewed in the Lake Waukam review policy. But just a couple here in regards to highlights of some things that did happen. So, we, there was funding for emergency funding for homeless services. Just so you know, the state approved $110 million for public housing this year towards homelessness. So, this was a priority. They were focusing on things that were emergency funding, which is probably why we didn't get a lot of our funding for our projects, but, and their other priority was wildfires as well. So, we did not get all the infrastructure projects that we wanted, but two that did stay in the budget that were really, really important to us was the northbound on-ramp at Baker View and I-5 and the Orchard Street project. And these are obviously very big, important projects, so we were quite excited that this funding actually went through. We did not get any funding for the aquatic invasive species control, so hopefully, that comes up last, next year. However, there was funding for the Municipal Research and Services Center, and that's probably not something that's known to the public so much, but something that's very, very important in regards to city research policy and support. They really help us out, so we're glad that that funding went through. Paid sick and, paid safe and sick leave legislation did not pass in the Senate. However, there is a possibility that this will be on the ballot in the fall, so maybe that is another way we can address it. And another one that is quite sad for us that didn't go through is the incentives to promote insulation of solar systems and local investments in solar generation. So, this did not pass the Senate, which is unfortunate because we have some really wonderful solar companies here. And then also another thing that did not pass was legislation to create a statewide tourism program. So, if anybody wishes more details, this is on the website, or you can look at the committee meeting. But thank you so much to Tom and Ben, who represent us in Olympia and do great work for us. So, we thank you for, we say thanks to them. Anyone else want to add anything on that one? No? Okay. Did we cover that? All right. And that was for information only. Okay, please.
I've missed you. I just wanted to say that we were also successful in getting the funding for 22 North, and that is something that, you know, we worked really hard for, and Tom and Ben worked really hard for us. So, I just wanted to mention that briefly.
The last item in front of Committee of the Whole today was a discussion of the draft comment letters regarding oil transport by rail. And our deputy administrator, Brian Heinrich, presented two letters to us today, which we were very supportive and think that the language is, gets, it asks for the things that we are hoping will make a difference to our community. So, these letters, we think, are in great shape, and we actually made a motion to approve, I believe we made a motion to approve these. Did we not? Yes? Okay. So, the motion was to support these letters continuing forward. They may have some amendments, but they are just language, and we're not concerned, we think that they'll come out very professional because that's the way Brian does things. So, we unanimously recommended this, and I so move.
Second.
All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries 7-0. That was all of our committee meetings for today. We have two sets of minutes before us, I believe. We have the 4/11, wait, here we go, sorry. We have evening meetings, minutes for April 11th, 2016.
Move approval.
Second. Discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries 7-0. Second set of meetings is for April 18th for our regular city council meetings. Move approval.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Please say aye. Aye. Opposed? Motion carries 7-0. Older New Business.
Councilmember Murphy. I am looking forward at our May 16th council meeting to bring forward a draft resolution in support of Initiative 1433. And this initiative is seeking to add paid and safe sick leave and also a gradual increase of the minimum wage to the Washington State ballot, and they're trying to get that on the ballot for this November. And so, I'll be bringing forward a resolution to see if the city council will support that initiative. I also just wanted to provide a fun, personal update. Yesterday was the Washington, or the Waukam County Democrats, Democratic Convention. And so, this was the time for all delegates to come together to voice their support for either Hillary or Bernie, and I was one of the delegates, and I'm excited that I got supported to move on to the next step. So, I'll be going to the Washington State Convention, and I'm also going to try to go to the National Convention in Philadelphia. So, just a fun update from my little world.
Councilmember Barker?
So, I wanted to, I think I'm imagining it's Leslie and then whoever else helps get people on our boards because the, I've watched the Parks Board since I got on, and all the new members, we have diversity in age, we have diversity in gender, and, you know, it's just really building for a really good conversation, having, you know, young and old and experienced and new. And it's something that I've been wanting to discuss, but now I'm already watching it happen on our boards, so I'm really thankful for all the outreach, whoever's doing it, that it really will bring a great discussion, I think, when we start to look at things.
Anyone else? Older New Business? Okay. I'm going to move on to a report out of our executive session. We had one item in front of us today, it was potential litigation. Staff provided information on a potential litigation matter. For information and discussion only, and no action was taken. And we're going to move on to the mayor's report.
Thank you very much, President Vargas. The, I have three things to say and then just one for information. I think that the Lake Waukam, Lake Waukam management team has done a really good job in pulling together a cohesive plan for Lake Waukam, and I think that's the optimum place for that discussion of expanding protection to take. When I was chair of the committee that dealt with Lake Waukam and other water issues, I would always show an overhead aerial view of Lake Waukam and Cedar River watershed. And people would ask why we had to put more resources into our drinking water system, and it's because in Cedar River, they only, they don't walk in their, in their watershed. And our watershed was a recreational and residential area before it was our drinking water source. But I think there's still requirements that we could put on as a community and as a county about what you can and can't do in the watershed. So, hopefully, that discussion through the planning, the Lake Waukam management group that you all sit on will be a good place to bring up some of those. And I think that I learned from sitting here for the last however many years that this is a never-ending project, and so we need to really look at a priority action to take and then get the agreement of the rest of the, you know, regulators or governors if we want to do more. And I, and I think it's a worthy activity for myself with Jack and you all with your peers to undertake. Secondly, Laura, it was a pleasure to meet Laura today, this morning. Liz and I went out to, we got the flyer about the first annual city hall peace out, which was really, was very interesting. And it was interesting because Dane and Laura, that were the two people that I talked with, weren't aware that we were supporting their position. So, I looked at it as not so much a protest, as a demonstration of support. And then Chief Cook and Chad Prasoli came by, and that was great, too, because there was a lot of information that was shared between them and the chief. And so, I just wanted to say that we sent a bulletin out to city employees. I hope you got a copy, just to let people know what was happening and to let them know that this, we're not necessarily adversaries here on this. And they promised to be packed up to go by 6:00. Yeah, in the morning. And there was a ruling, which I was told by Chief Cook today, that we can't really ban people from public places, but we can limit what time they're there. So, I, we need to, I need to consider that, or we need to consider that when we're talking about other activities. But anyway, I, I thought that they were, this is a peaceful demonstration, no troublemakers, please. So, this is from the organizers. And I just wanted to say I thank, I thank them for being very professional in the way that they were handling their demonstration. So, so if any of you want to say hello on your way out, I think they're out on the front corner. Did you talk to them? Yeah. And then the other thing is, I didn't know what a food desert was until recently, and you all know what I'm talking about. I was very disappointed when I found out that when Albertson's bought all the Hagan Stores, they were going to close their grocery store in Birchwood. That grocery store is a walkable place for people to get produce and food and things that they can't get closer than, is it a mile? Yeah, a mile away. And many of those people that live in that area don't have cars, so they're reliant on the bus or other transportation. And so, I just wanted to raise the issue that the no-compete clause that Albertson's put in their proposal for filling that spot is their right to do. I mean, they're a business and they can do that, but it causes me a lot of angst that there's going to be a big segment of our Birchwood neighborhood who is going to have difficulty getting the food they need. And I'm not sure what the city, you know, can do themselves because there's private transactions, et cetera. But I, I guess I'm, I'm looking for what we can do with either other people that own property there at the shopping center or, or somebody else, or whatever. I'm, I'm just, just like I said, really disappointed with that because I was willing to accept the fact that we have pretty much a monopoly owner in Bellingham now of many of our grocery stores, but I, I never thought there would not be another grocery store that went into the Albertson's location. So, with that, I am reappointing Nina Talbot to the Bellingham Sister Cities Advisory Board, and with that, I will turn my mic off.
Not yet.
I don't get to mention turning my, my mic off yet. As all of you are aware, we have been trying to procure our permits for the overwater walkway for many years, and I think that's the one thing, Terry, we ask people, "What would you like to see happen before you pass on?" And that was Terry's.
Pass on from the city council, not totally.
From your tenure.
We have been very conscientious in negotiating for our permits. We have a whole slew of letters and documentation about offers that have been made, et cetera. But right at this point in time, we are unable to secure our permits from the Corps of Engineers, or actually, the Coast Guard. And then also, the cleanup money, I was corrected by Amy Cram that we do have the cleanup money for Cornwall Beach. We've secured that money. It's Argy Haley that we don't have the money for. So, I have mentioned this to several of you, that the DOT, who said we had time, has now announced to us, "We do not have time to spend the money that we got from the federal government. We need to spend it now on a project down there." And so, I am suggesting and recommending that we move that money from the overwater walkway to Granary Avenue, and we leave the overwater walkway on the tip, and we continue to work to try to get a resolution of that. That's really important to many people that live in the city. But we, we really can't afford to lose the money, and we've been contacted by Patty Murray's office, by Rick Larson's office, and by DOT, that whatever the circumstances were two years ago, they've changed. So, you've already approved the realignment, and I don't think you have to approve this. Someone tell me. But I wanted you to know, and I wanted to make a public announcement about it, and I also have left a message with interested parties that have been working on this with us to let them know what's, what's happening. So, that's it. Now, I'm turning my mic off.
Councilmember Borneman?
Two things. One, on the, on your comment about Albertson's having a legal right, I do want to say, there is a very clear distinction between legal rights and moral decisions. And this may be a legal right. I do not think it's a moral decision to do that, to ban the ability for another food provider for that neighborhood. And that's, sometimes I think we have to remember that. Just because there's a legal right doesn't make it a moral decision to make. And I am really disappointed that we weren't able to, and it wasn't through our part, you know, and I'm very disappointed in that we couldn't get anything coming across about what it would take to have that happen with all the years. And going to stay there in my mind when other decisions are made, sometimes, I think.
Well, and it's still on the tip, so I want to assure people that if there's an opportunity, Terry.
But it sets us way back of whether that's ever going to happen. It's simply because of, we can't even set it at a table. That's very, very disappointing.
Okay, I'm done.
Okay. Thank you, Mayor Kelly. Consent agenda.
Move approval.
Oh, second.
Your boy still has it.
We have a motion in front of us. Any discussion? The consent agenda, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries 7-0. Final consideration of ordinances.
Agenda Bill 21211. An ordinance of the City of Bellingham, Washington, authorizing the mayor to contract with the Bellingham-Waukam Firefighters Benevolent Foundation to administer funds donated to the city to assist the families of firefighters who have lost their lives or been disabled, especially in the line of duty.
Move. Third. Second. Aye.
Dan Hamel?
Aye.
Jane Knudsen?
Yes.
Michael Lilicust?
Aye.
Roxanne Murphy?
Aye.
Pinky Vargas?
Aye.
April Barker?
Aye.
Ordinance passes 7-0.
Thank you, everyone, for joining us. Wow, just a little bit after 8:00, so.
We go so much.
Yeah, when we're sitting here. It feels like summer today. Our next council meeting will be on May 16th, and with that, till next time, we are adjourned.